So, any additions or relations to the agenda?
No.
All right. Any other answers?
Well, the addition of the Director of Human Resources, Dr. Sean Carney, he is here, he's already on the agenda, so we wanted to make sure to acknowledge that.
That's cool. Welcome to them. All right, I'm gonna go ahead with our next agenda topic, which is Board Recognition. So, a few really great ones. Let's go around first is Board Recognition around the district facilities and district staff. We all want to thank you for your dedication and unwavering support during what is a terrible aftermath of the tornado, but you know, what work went into that? It was very late nights and the long hours, and we cannot thank you enough for keeping the district moving. Uh, next Board Recognition is Griffiths Institute. So, they hosted another STEM, wonderful STEM event, where we just of course want to thank them for all their active engagements in keeping our kids engaged in STEM. Uh, third one is our community schools recognition. So, along with our wonderful district and facility staff, I think it would be unfair to not recognize our community school partner. The support that they provided for all of our families and our students that were impacted by the tornado was largely recognized, as well as I know many individual PEG came together to also help support and donate to community schools. So, thank you again. And then lastly, we have a recognition from for RFA from the U.S. Secretary of Education. I'll just read a little bit of it. So, this was to Mr. Brian Laverne. Thanks to your leadership and stewardship of the funds of the ARP and the Partisan Safer Communities Act, you've experienced some of the greatest one-year achievement growth since 2009. There has also been a significant increase in mental health supports offered in your school under your watch. I want to personally thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to represent yourself and your colleagues by participating in the 2023-2024 National Teacher and Principal Survey. Thank you to Mr. Laverne. And with that, I don't think we have any public comments. Perfect. So, we are gonna zoom right through to our superintendent report.
Absolutely. Sandy Williams has moved forward. It is important that as I start my tenure as your superintendent, one of the things that I always wanna make sure that I do is to give you an update on my progress and that the community needs to understand that we will hold you accountable for the things that I outlined that I said I would do, but at the same time to make sure that I make my leadership visible to the community so that they know what it is that you're holding me accountable to. When I was interviewing, one of the tasks that you had given us was to be able to put together a 100-day plan to outline what would our 100-day look like. So, it is important now, since I've been in the district for a month and two weeks, it feels like a year, that I also keep you up to date. When I posted my 100-day plan to the community prior to coming here, one person commented on Facebook on whether I was going to do what I say that I was going to do. And my answer always is, when I say yes, my yes is yes, and my no is no. So, therefore today, I wanted to take some time to give you an update on my progress regarding what I had outlined in my 100-day plan so that you are clear in terms of where I am currently. So, on your goal number one. Good, Sandy? You can click on the 100-day plan. And go to goal number one. So, back in the day, I said Rome was home. I know some people stole it after tornado, but Rome is home is gonna continue. Rome is home is going to be our theme for the district for this year. So, on the goal number one, that really talked about governance. Go down, Sandy. Continue. Continue. Yep. Goal number one. Yep. Perfect. On the governance. So, the first bullet says I was going to draft an entry plan and share it with the board to obtain feedback. With the little house that's orange, that's to let you know that I did that. And not only did I share it with you for feedback during my interview process, but I said that I was going to share it with the community, and I did. The other was to engage in one-on-one meetings with board numbers to foster relationship and broader bargaining perspective. We have been engaging on one-to-one, and we will continue to do that on a bi-monthly basis because it is important that we get to know each other collectively as a board, but also it makes me, it's important to me that I get to know you as an individual and to bring things that are in your, on your mind to my purview because I won't know unless you tell me. So, I started doing that, and that will continue to be ongoing. So, it is important that the community know that we don't just talk here at this table, but we also have one-on-one sessions with the board. We talked about establishing regular meetings with the board president for the purposes of general communication and creation of board meeting agendas. What a lot of times the public doesn't see is the fact that myself and the board president and sometimes the vice president will work on the board agendas before we come to this table. So, it is important that they know that it started and it is ongoing. We talked about examining protocols and processes to identify areas for review. Again, that is a piece that has started. It is ongoing, and there are a lot of procedures and processes that we either need to refine or that are not currently in existence that we are beginning to put in existence. So, if you recall, one of the things that I said is first, I'm going to listen, I'm going to engage, and I'm going to know. But at the same time, while we're in the process of listening, engaging, and learning, I'm also evaluating and planning so that I can give you an overall report in terms of what I've learned, what I've heard, and what we're going to do. And to some extent, we're starting seeing that I started tweaking some things and refining some things is because there are things that are needed now for the start of the school year, and that is one of the reasons why I share these things with you during your weekly briefings. So, again, we said that we were gonna collaborate on a Board of Education learning session, a retreat, to establish shared values, organizational communication structure, et cetera. We did that the day of the tornado. I told everybody that I was coming off on high, and so we will continue to do that. And you will see there's two bullets left under need of goal one that obviously is going to be completed. But I would say for the first month of my tenure here that we've accomplished a lot, and I wanna make sure that the public understands that when we say we're gonna do something, we definitely do that. So, moving on to goal number two. Goal number two is around organizational capacity and alignment. I indicated that I was going to meet with our interim superintendent at the time for smooth transition. Since I got here on May 13, when I signed my contract, him and I started having regular communication. That way, I know what he was working on so that when I started in July, I was not behind at April. And so, that took place. I introduced myself on day one to all of the administrator staff and families via email within the first few days. And again, we have regular meetings with the executive leadership team. They are known as the cabinet. I like to call them the executive leadership team. When I came here, I asked them how many times they were meeting. They said occasionally whenever they need to get together. So, we established weekly meetings, and those meetings happened every Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Prior to coming here, I also gave a brief document to all of the leaders, not only principals and A P's, but anyone with a title of a director in this district, from facilities to transportation, et cetera. They all completed that leadership briefing for me prior to me arriving here so that when I got here, I got a chance to read through them, and then I engaged in one-on-one meeting with each and all of them. In addition, I think it is important that we have a great relationship with all of our labor partners. So, I've met with the leaders of every unit, from RAA to RTA to the two CSEAs. You see, I know all of them. So, we've met, and that cadence of communication on a monthly basis will continue with each of our labor partners. I talked about reviewing the district fiscal situation. I have begun to do that, although I didn't put a little house next to it. But I want you to understand that every day gives us an opportunity to look at the district as a whole. So, I'm not looking at only individual items, but I'm also connecting the items together. So, these are a few of the things that we started that, and many of them will be ongoing. Most importantly tonight, where it says review all critical documents. One of the documents that I checked and looked at was our safe legislation documents, which three of them are in your package today for you to review to make sure that there were student management practices that were very clear, that were intentional. And in addition to the code of conduct summary, you see that every parent will receive a trifold of the code of conduct summary so that they know how we are holding students accountable as well. Goal number three. I won't go through all of these pieces, but it's just to show you. So, well, on your students. You know, I'm waiting. I am so excited to be receiving our students on September 5th, and I cannot wait for them to be here. But one of the things under the student area that I started doing along with our assistant superintendent of instruction and also our directors is analyzing patterns in student achievement data. You know, starting tomorrow, we look at the leadership retreat for three days, and what I said to all of the leaders was that academic program excellence was going to be a district priority. And in order for me to be able to really identify that as a priority, I needed to understand what our student achievement data was district-wide, how it compares to the county, if I say the county, the region, I'm gonna say I'm used to the county, how it compares to the region and where we need to go as a district. And so, I have done that. I'm very clear on where we are and very intentional about where we should be going. And of course, the rest of the stuff are things that I started to do, utilizing data to ensure that all students are performing at or the grade level, et cetera. And that will continue when the students are here. One of my goals is to start what I call the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. It is important that you understand that student voice has to be elevated in this district, and then I believe that students be first. So, in order for me to make sure that I know what students are thinking and to help move this district forward, it is important that I hear directly from them. And the Student Advisory Council I'm thinking about right now is for students who are in grade two or the range of 12. You will be surprised that a lot of people don't think that students at the elementary level have a voice, but they do if we give them the opportunity, and they will tell you the thing that you need to know. So, it is important, and those are the kind of progress that I will continue to update you on as I engage the students more closely as the school year starts. Go to goal four. Please. And then goal four, under engagement and communication. I said that I have to prepare a special message to the home community on the district website. I've done that with making my 100-day plan visible so everybody will know in terms of my values and beliefs because I will not compromise my values and beliefs. And I'm about students, and students will always be a core and essential of every decisions that I make, and I'm encouraging my leaders and coaching them to do the same. And then all of these other things, those are things that I am going to be doing and engaging with in the next month. I first wanted to start with meeting with people internally. Now that I've finished, completed that, it is time for me to branch out to the community in terms of all of the individuals that I've mentioned here. And so, it is important to know, for you to know, where I'm at in my process of the things that I said I was going to do. Again, for the community, it is important that the board will be accountable, similar to how I will be holding every district leader accountable for how we move into this district. And so, it is important that you understand that they set the tone for me, and then I set the tone for the rest of the district. So, I'll open it up for questions before I move on with my goal report. Any questions?
I will just get the comment. Wow. Given that what we wish in the experience in tornado that devastated the district office. This is for the question.
So, with that said, in terms of me branching out in the community, a big part of the community knows our families, right? Parents and guardian, and anybody else who makes up the greater part, even when they don't have children in the community. Go on to the next one, please. So, I'm branching out, yep, to the community. So, one of the ideas that we thought of is being able to do a community meet and greet. We have two dates so far that has been identified, August 20th from 5:00 to 7:00 after our RFA, and August 23rd from 1:00 to 3:00 at Connected Community Schools for families, parents, guardians, citizens who live in the district who just wants to either meet the superintendent. I've been to at least four churches in this community already. Every Sunday, I try to go to a different church. And so, I've met a lot of our team, our staff members who go to those churches, some students I have met along the way. But I felt it was important for me to do some meet and greet with the community, and there is no question off the table. I am very comfortable to be able to speak with the community, to talk about the vision and mission of this district, where we wanted to move forward, to be honest about the challenges that we face, but at the same time to also talk about the strengths of this district and of the community I watch. So, we're offering two, that will be the two of the first round. And what I asked my two assistant superintendents to do is to join me so that people also get to see them and understand what they do, especially if there's a question about instructional curriculum. The person with the purview is our assistant superintendent for instructions so that they can help me answer some questions where I don't have the historical knowledge. They can also help me with that. So, as you see, I don't know if you've seen it. It's on Twitter, it's on Facebook, it's everywhere. And the good news is that the community is really happy to see that I am taking that step. I did make a promise to a parent that I met at crust. And they said, you know, we wanna feel more involved. And I said, don't worry, August is coming, and I'm going to have a meet and greet. So, again, when I say I'm gonna do something, I make sure I do it. And we're thanking again Community Connected Schools for providing the refreshment. Just understand that everything that we do, because we don't have the money to do it, I'm always asking people if they recover the cost of certain things, and they are happy to do so. I'm happy to receive. So, this is a copy for the community's sake. Can you click on the community, go back on the community meet and greet? So, I always link everything so that you see the example. So, for those of you who have not seen the flyer, this is what it looks like. It says two opportunities to meet the superintendent's schools. The dates are there, and then of course, giving those to Home Connected Community Schools for the refreshment that you're providing at this event. Any comments? And you are welcome to come too so that you can see your sister much. Absolutely. Okay? All right. Okay, let's go to the next one. Thank you. Leadership Retreat. Similar to how the board had their own retreat, it is important that we know because leadership matters. And therefore, there will be a leadership retreat for three days for all of our district administrators. So, the first two day, I also linked the agenda so that you can see, we're gonna be talking about what leadership means, how to multiply our leadership, and like I said, talking about leadership matter. On the third day, it's gonna be a half a day. Two hours of that day will be on significant things that our lawyers have to talk about, sexual assault in the workplace, harassment, and so on and so forth. Those are required things that administrators must have. But also, I get the last two hours. And it's really about setting direction, setting tone, setting expectation in terms of how we move as one district, not ten different schools, but one Rome, and being able to articulate with all administrators and making it clear where we're going and how we get there and giving them the resources to be able to get there. It is truly important to me that every parent, every community member in this district understands that there is one Rome and not like ten different schools. And in order to do that, we have to have some consistency of practices and then being clear, because I think being clear is to be kind, right? If you're clear with people, they know the direction, you communicate with them, and once we agree that that's how we expect to move. And so, that's that last day. And I have tons of stuff to share with them that I've been sharing with you behind the scenes as I'm completing them, but they'll be clear in terms of where we're going, and the expectation is that everybody will be following that same consistency. One of the case in point is the communication document to be clear about who people can go to in this district when they have a different question. They have a question about curriculum. There's a step-by-step process in what the chain of command is. And the same thing with the organizational chart so that there's no interpretation. It's very clear who do you go to first before you consider a superintendent. So, those are the things. If you wanna look at the agenda, it's linked for you. I will share that slide, that slide deck with you for this presentation on your Friday so that if you wanted to see what the agenda looked like, you can. If you click on it really quickly so that we can kind of give a brief overview. And this will be in partnership with the I O group. If you recall, you had approved that, and that was through a grant that we were able to pay for it. So, you'll see some fierce urgency of change, genuine leadership, leadership matters, all of these things. That's really the bulk of it. It's really helping us to understand why it is important that we need to run for. And then we get into the district priorities so that we can set direction and tone for this district on the second day. We can fly from that. And then, okay, lastly. We, I think we had our first job fair. I don't know if you've ever had a job fair here. So, when I came here and, you know, they were telling me that there were many positions available. I'm like, have you guys thought about a job fair? And we thank Dr. Brian for taking on the helm. Once I showed it to him, he's like, yeah, let's do it. And I said, well, let's identify a date. So, he identified the date. Jim Popaski, our PR person, did some flyers for us. So, again, I wanted to publicly acknowledge the work of Dr. Brian to our HR and the entire HR team and all of the district leaders and building leaders who participated in reviewing applications for us and conducted interviews, underspied interviews. So, Dr. Brian indicated to me that the vast majority of the candidates about approximately thirty to forty five applicants were mainly in the area of facility, labor, cargo, and transportation. And so, moving forward, we do intend to do more of that. Dr. Sean Carney is here, so he's gonna hear that I expect job fairs to be done so that we can recruit the right individuals and so on and so forth. So, I keep times during the year so that we're not rushing at the end in August to say we don't have a lot of people for the positions. And so, we wanna make sure we continue to do that. But recruitment, advertisement, and retention are the three areas that I really want our HR department to focus on. Question?
I have one. One question would be, so, for all the individuals that come and apply, do they all have to have fingerprints?
That's a very good question. I'll pass that on to Dr. Brian. Dr. Brian?
If you're gonna work for the school district, the answer is yes. And there have been some delays for people getting their fingerprints back, and that's just held us up for certain recommendations. Like if they're going to be around kids that they had their fingerprints on.
Can the school district advise where you need to go to have that done? I mean, if they call the school district?
Any employee, we recommend, we will recommend where to go. Also, we used to be, again, when I had my done, we'd go to the law enforcement agency. Now, you have that specific location where you can go. But we, anyone who has a question about fingerprints should call the, our office, and we'll certainly guide them and advise on where they can go.
And that would hold true for teachers that are looking to have employment with the district also.
Oh, absolutely.
Or even teachers who are retired and would like to come back to substitute. They also have to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, they do have to do it, so. Thank you.
Okay? Any questions? Anything else you wanna add, Dr. Brian, about the job fair?
For the first one I've ever attempted, I thought it went well. I appreciate the kudos, but really, the kudos go to all the people who came, who applied, and all the employees who sat there and spoke to all the people on behalf of their respective departments. It was, it was, it was exciting. And I'm sure Dr. Carney will put his own spin on it next year and make it even much better than what we did this year of first September.
Oh, first of time within four days?
Yes.
So, I think that was a good success. And lastly, I think that's my last slide. It is official. The district office team has moved to BOSI's, and they moved this morning. And I made sure that I stopped in in the afternoon, you know, and people were very thankful for the work that our executive leadership did to make sure that they were in comfortable places. And in addition, the work of BOSI's, again, another group that really deserved recognition is the BOSI's team who just cleared out the whole house and invited us in, and we feel a part of their family. And so, you know, BOSI's is a good cooperative partner, and we're just so blessed to have them in this area, especially under the leadership of Dr. Carney. Really appreciative of all that they do. And all of my teammates were smiling this afternoon, even though we had to move again, but the reality is they were still smiling. So, for those who do not know, the district registrar is going to be back here at CLEF. That's what parents are used to. They know where the district office is, and because we are entering the season of school, we wanna make sure that people who need to register can come here to register. My office along with our executive assistant, my wonderful Sandy Russell, will also be here. It is important that we stay visible in the district. And I, as I told my teammate, my job is to travel to you so you don't have to travel here. So, I do intend and continue to be visible in Corona so that the district office folks will see me and in addition, be invisible here in the district for the people who are here. And then, of course, we said we were going to completely design that Ms. Rosen had been asking us for. We were very closely with Lovella. They did put a nice design. We have accounted for everyone for the district office and who has supported them who we would like to move into the district office. And we showed that design to all of our teammates of the district office and the oven, and that was delivered also to Ms. Rosen recording. So, that's where we are at for this place. I know you have a question soon.
I just wanted to be sure. So, the district office team moved to BOSI's. Do they have the same phone numbers that they had when they were here?
Very good question, yes. Everything stayed the same, including our technology. So, nothing has changed.
Okay. So, the numbers that are on the website are what they would utilize when I was telling them to pay off the phone.
Absolutely. HR, business office, everybody stayed the same. And again, what I love is that technology, we are well in advance. I gotta give kudos to the technology team. I mean, there are some things we're five years behind in, I mean, there are some things we're five years behind in, but there are some things that we're like ten step ahead. And I can tell you with the technology and all of those moves, these people did not miss a beat. When we moved to RFA, we had the same phone numbers. Now we moved to Corona, they got all of the phone numbers working, Brad, Pat, all of their team who takes care of the technology. They came and they got us up and running. We already opened one this afternoon when I got here, so. But yes. All right, lastly, I promise you, this is the last slide. I have a lot to say, you know, I have a lot to give you the update on. So this is for the community. First day of school is coming. You know how we have those Target commercials that shows the parents with the cart going to shop? You've probably started already seeing them. That means school is near. The first day of school for our students in this district is September fifth. So if you are new to the district or have a child who is of school age who you have not registered for school, I'd like our district registrar to be busy right now and not on the second week of September. So it is important that you contact our district registrar right here at CLEF. Um, Ms. Lori Cole is her name, at, uh, the following number, three one five, three three eight, six five six nine, or at her email at L Cole, C O L E, at home C S D dot org. Attendance matter, so if you want your child to be in school on September fifth and they have not yet enrolled, it is important, because right out of the gate, parents, I'm going to be holding you accountable for the chronic absenteeism rate. It is too high, and it takes all of us to make sure that our students are in school. And you will get some communication from me about attendance matter. So it is important, if you have not registered, this is the time, especially those of you who are new to the district. Contact the district registrar. Let us be busy right now and not wait till September sixth. Thank you. That concludes my oral report of education.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda. I will go ahead and, uh, do a resolution. It is under our condition of the superintendent of schools. A consent agenda be accepted by the Board of Education. Engage the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right, we're gonna move, uh, to page ten of the board agenda to our regular meeting. We're gonna go ahead and start with finance. This will be a roll call, um, voice declaration, so once Sue reads the action item and moves the resolution, I will be calling you one by one. Any反驳?
Resolution to confirm the school tax rule and issuance of warrant for collection. Whereas in accordance with section thirteen oh six, as amended of the education law of the state of New York, this Board of Education has asked to be, to be prepared, the school tax rule based upon the assessment rules of the city of Roanoke and towns of Lee, Anville, Western, and Barona, for the tax to be levied as stated in the Rome City School District budget for the fiscal period July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, closing. Now therefore be resolved that the school tax rule, so prepared by the saying hereby, is in all respects confirmed in the delivery of such tax, school tax rule, together with this board's warrant for the collection of such tax and ex thereto, is hereby authorized and directed. And be it further resolved that the rate of interest payable on school taxes remaining unpaid shall be the rate of interest on unpaid city taxes in the city of Rome, New York. Engage the resolution.
Second. Thank you. Second by Paula. And I'm gonna start to my left to right. How do you achieve? All of it. Aye?
Superbelle.
Aye.
I'm for handbooks.
Aye.
Person's paper. Aye, sorry.
John, I agree now.
Aye.
Press the committee, aye. That's all in favor. Presses, hands.
Okay, the next committee meeting of the finance committee, our first, uh, committee meeting for this year, will be Monday, uh, eight nineteen at eight thirty here in this room. Our agenda for that meeting was basically a meet and greet with our new business official, who will be her first, and also just to go over what the roles and responsibilities of the finance committee will be going forward for the year and some of the items that we're hoping to discuss and talk about going forward. So that goes normally Kirsten, Cassie, and sorry, Kirsten, Kelly, and myself, the members of the finance.
Now you just said the data, but when I had, I would be focused. I'm sorry, now that you've said that, it, but I'll do it at eight thirty. I can make that so we're good.
Okay. And that goes to finance committees, third one.
I'll do the educational programs. Action item number one, resolution to approve contract. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the O'Nate County contract for preschool special education services, and move the resolution. Second by Kirsten. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. People operations. Action item number one, resolution to change the name of people operations. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves changing the name of people operations to human resources, and move the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number two, resolution to accept retirement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the draft of retirement in the following individuals, Brian Fay, Nicholas Stone, and at Starks Elementary, July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Engage the resolution. Second by Paula. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes, and congratulations to Mr. Fay. Action item number three, resolution to approve administrative personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the appointment of Dr. Sean Carney for the position of Director of Human Resources at a salary of one thousand two, twenty five, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, pro-rated, effective August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Engage the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes, and congratulations, Mr. Carney.
Congratulations.
Dr. Crink. Action item number four, resolution to approve administrative personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the appointment of Jenna Bashiolo for the-
Shaw.
Shaw.
Oh, my. I'm sorry. For the grant-funded position of Dean of Students at Bellamy Elementary School at salary of seventy-five thousand, pro-rated, effective September first, twenty twenty four. Engage the resolution. Second by John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number five, resolution to approve administrative personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the appointment of Alyssa Vito for grant, for the grant-funded position of Dean of Students at Stroud Middle School at salary of seventy-seven thousand dollars, pro-rated, effective September first, twenty twenty four. Engage the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion?
One question. Do these run for a year?
Yes, yes, uh, as long as the superintendents, it's possible.
So they could go long?
It was-
They could go longer if the grant was further, but otherwise, it's just as far as, eight years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number six, resolution to approve administrative personnel. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the appointment of Sierra Rowe, Rue, for the position of athletic trainer at a salary of fifty-five thousand, pro-rated, effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, funding fingerprint clearance, and move the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item seven, resolution to create positions. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby creates the following titled positions. Custodial Operations Supervisor, Executive Secretary of Supported Learning, Administrator of Special Projects. Engage the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion?
I just have one question on these. So, no one's doing these right now? These positions, ma'am, that you're creating, or is somebody?
There's one, the Administrator for Special Projects.
Okay. Oh, no, that, that's down there. Yeah, okay, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. There is someone already doing administration of special projects?
Correct, and that is, um, Mr. Mike Bruce. With two special projects up here, I'm surprised. The first is the evaluation program, and also hands continue to work in the training.
Okay. The other two, we don't have any before yet, and we-
The other two, I'll let Dr. Bryant or the, um, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction take on some of those two. The Custodial Operations Supervisor.
I can respond to the, uh, Supported Learning. Uh, in talking with Dr. Tichara, she has had a very difficult time since the, uh, I guess, the, the termination of, uh, supervisory person in that area of managing her department with clerical help. She can't always be there, and you cannot, they cannot use somebody within a clerical, CSCA area to supervise other members. So, this is being, uh, created, and it's grant-funded. This is, uh, the six eleven, nineteen grant, and it has to have a title of secretary attached to it, the grant funded. So, this will not be part of a parting unit, and that's how we were able to make this recommendation to provide still clerical function while still providing some size, some sort of supervisory component. So, uh, this is a new position, but it is grant-funded through six eleven, six nineteen grant.
And then the other, Custodial Operations Supervisor?
That one is sort of a, a hybrid, I, I guess the best way to describe it. It is a, a new position, but it's sort of a combination of one that was their previous. Uh, the gentleman who was their past. And so, we are creating more of a supervisory, more of a global, uh, position in the, uh, to cover all the custodians and, uh, throughout the district. And that's what this person will be doing.
All right, perfect, thank you. That wasn't part of the job fair, was it?
No.
The position that we were looking for?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I have one question related to that. Are, so these numbers not fall on the civil service? Or would they fall on the civil service?
They, the, the one with, uh, the one is going to be civil service.
Custodial?
The Custodial Supervisor. We've already been in contact with, uh, Mr. Sears, uh, about, uh, that particular one. And we've, we've received his blessing, and everything is in alignment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number eight, resolution to accept employment agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the employment agreement between the school district and the interim administrators of special projects, and move the resolution. Second by John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number nine, resolution to accept employment agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the employment agreement between the school district and the Director of Business and Finance, and move the resolution.
Right.
Second by Kirsten. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item number ten, resolution to accept memorandum of agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the Rome Teachers Association Chemical Hygiene Officer. Engage the resolution.
Right.
Second by Sue. Any discussion?
I just have one question on this. So, will this continue to be that same person as long as this person is still? I'm sorry, I said, so with that person that is gonna take us, having an officer?
Is that annuals position?
Yeah, so did you, do we have to redo this every time, or as long as this person is still employed in their capacity that they're at, are they gonna keep doing? That's where, that's the amount, or is this gonna be a?
Is that annuals?
Right.
It is an annual cycle, meaning the two positions are advertised right now. So first, the first thing we needed to do was to make sure that we have a chemical hygiene plan in place. I finalized that chemical hygiene plan. With those two officers' job descriptions being included in there. And that's why now the position is advertised, so that, uh, individuals who are qualified for it, usually we talk about chemistry teachers.
Right.
They can apply. And if they get in, it doesn't mean back every year, there might be some individual-
Okay, 'cause that's what I was gonna ask, okay. It's not, it's gotta be made available each year.
You know, 'cause other people may be of interest, may, may have an interest, and so we wanna give this space, um, to those who are interested.
Thank you.
And it's advertised right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes, and thank you for, uh, for work on that, I know. State not Canada?
As you had a fee.
Yes.
And, and so, one of the things that our Assistant Superintendent just worked on is I would see the bill. And I said, now that we have a plan, so with the plan, can we send the bill? So, I'm trying to make sure that we don't pay that bill.
Then we're, they're needs.
Oh, for sure. Oh, no, there will continue to be an annual chemical hygiene. That's why you have a copy. Yes.
Action item number eleven, resolution to accept memorandum of agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the Rome Teachers Association for instructional coaches. Engage the resolution. Second by John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Action item twelve, resolution to accept memorandum of agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the Rome Teachers Association. One on one virtual instruction. Engage the resolution. Second by Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Ryan, I think you're very busy today, reading these. Uh, number thirteen, resolution to accept memorandum of agreement. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the CSCA local one thousand, book manager, satellite school secretary. Engage the resolution. Second by Kirsten. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Uh, next up is our policy. Uh, if you're putting policy on hold right now, I know, uh, Jeff gave a, a great update next time. Um, we have no miscellaneous business. Any discussion items? All right. Lastly, we have our new business. Uh, so, our lawn team, uh, have put a lot of work into, uh, the following items. So I am going to go around and make sure that everyone approves, um, each one of these items. So we have the Board and Superintendent's Education Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So approved. Our board workshop list. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Our board goals.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Our board norms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. And lastly, our, uh, policy review protocols. I remember Jeff said he wasn't here to do this one, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Um, just from a business perspective, uh, our lawn, obviously, will be working with our district leaders on board, or district priorities, so please plan on, um, an executive session next time so that we can get our lot, our goals for the year. Um, we'll have an exec, executive session, uh, likely to. We have no old business and no additional public comment. So with that, thank you all for tuning, and I'll just make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have one question, so for the opening, thanks, of school, not for the students, but with SPAD. Is it something you would like us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Sue, for prompting me. September third is our opening, I would say, reception, welcoming back. And again, our theme is Rome is Home. Everything that we do will have Rome as home. And you will see the beautiful banners that will be hung on all of our district buildings so that people understand the theme. And so I am inviting, um, each and every board member, if you can, I know you work, and I know this is a volatile job that you have here at the board table, um, please come. We will have breakfast beginning at seven thirty for those who would arrive early to mingle. But our kickoff will be at eight thirty to ten thirty. And, um, you know, I mentioned that we like to elevate student voice, and students in our district will speak first. You will see that in action, 'cause what I say, if not only I say it, but you will see it in action. We have two wonderful, beautiful, uh, one is a junior and one is a senior who will be emceeing the whole event, and so students can personally on district and local. They have accepted the assignment, and I'm looking forward, they are so retired, they don't understand. Um, they're excited. And on behalf of the board, I've asked our, um, president, the board president, to be able to say something to the faculty and the staff to welcome them back to a new school year, uh, on behalf of the board. And each, uh, labor partner will be given about one to two minutes to, again, welcome all of the employees. It is important that it happens. And all of our supporting tasks, right, like we have for a student, for example, who's a partner and making sure they transfer to our student. It was important to me that I invited all of these individuals from community connected schools. Because when we're talking about district expectations and district priorities, everyone is involved in that process, and they need to understand what the district priorities are so that they can see themselves, because those are the individuals that hold everybody accountable. Labella, I think that will be there as well, I've invited them, because they keep outbuilding together. And so it is important that they understand that we're looking for the environment, we're in an environment to continue to be conducive for student learning, and that improves that. So overall, we wanna invite everybody who has a hand in the district, who gets a paycheck in the district. It is not a, um, or you can opt out, it is a requirement, they must attend it. Um, because it is important, as we said in the direction, that every employee knows that it's a workday, and that I expect for them to be there.
Where is this?
It's gonna be, yes, at RFA, they look like, yeah, RFA in the big auditorium, 'cause I've learned it's a small I, and it's a big I. See, I went to visit, I got it. And so, um, we're really looking forward to that day.
I can, one, just one thing I wanted to add, and I will be remiss if I didn't say I was president of the BOSEs board this year, representing Rome. Um, our component districts in our BOSEs have, to each and every one of them, have expressed their desire to help us after our district office was damaged the way it was, and to go forward with what they had to offer. They absolutely are in support of Rome in every way possible, as we can all see. And I guess one of the biggest reasons I wanna mention that is the fact that oftentimes in Rome, we've been, in the past, criticized for the fact that we buy into certain services. And I just wanna say, if we didn't buy into those services, our BOSEs would not be as strong as what it is. Basically because Rome is a very, very large part of what BOSEs can offer. Basically because Rome is a very, very large part of what Bosse's can offer. And now we have all seen the expertise that Bosse's can bring back to us, because we are all one. I don't, it's Rome, it's Verona, it's Canostota, it's each and every one of our component districts that sit with us. And our students are mingling with all the other component students when they go to those programs. The kind of things that we gander from the expertise that the administration there can bring to us, the professional development opportunities they bring to us, it's all incorporated with us. We are all one. So I just wanted to, I would be remiss if I did not say that, because I do, every day that I sit there, I represent Rome. That's my job, my role as being the chosen person over there, but we are all one together.
And similarly, you know, when someone, Scott, brings us together, all of the component superintendents, and so we have our leaders on Friday, so it isn't that we don't have each other in other districts as well. But similar to what you said, because we have a larger district, a lot happen on behalf of Rome and also the other districts as well, so.
A wonderful note to leave on, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn our August 12th meeting. So. Second by Kirsten.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?